Community prayer from Selectmen Robinson.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit and dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all those who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens in our community that we have been allowed to serve that may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, February 5th, 2019. The meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We do have openings on several committees, and if you refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website, you'll find a listing and application. We now reach that stage of citizen participation. Ten minutes we set aside at the start of every meeting where we invite citizens to step forward and speak to us for -- we try to limit it to three minutes so that others can speak. Was there anybody that wanted to participate this evening in citizen participation? There being no one, we will then move to Mr. Aaron Polanski, who is the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School Superintendent. I got that out. And we'd like to invite you to step forward and update us perhaps on what's going on in one of our hidden gems.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I also have a student from Carver with me, Amanda Hannan, who I'd like to invite to join me.
Sure. And we would ask you to make sure you speak into the microphone because we are being -- the Nielsen ratings are key to us, so we need to make sure that the audio is picked up.
We'll do our best to keep the ratings high. And thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Pull that mic in tight to you, please.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to be here on behalf of Old Colony and in the presence of our Carver residents. It's an absolute joy to be a part of Old Colony. What we've done is we've started with a highlight video that we think will give you -- will encapsulate a lot of what's going on at Old Colony right now and give you an inside view of what it is we do. In following that, we'd like to add a little bit of information.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. A hidden gem amongst the cranberry bobs of southeastern Massachusetts, our 80-acre Rochester campus is home to experiences designed to prepare today's students for tomorrow's challenges. Discover and develop your passions. Graduate with college credit, industry certifications, professional licenses to complement your skills in your selected area of expertise. If you're interested in specializing in vocational education before attending college or would like to embark on a successful career upon graduation, we are your answer. Our calling is to transform lives. Your success defines our legacy. Consider the possibilities. Welcome to Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School. One of the biggest draws of Old Colony Regional is our ability to connect with the student and also to connect with their families. We really have the opportunity to build relationships. And before we can ever bring our students to a high level of learning, it's really important that that foundation of relationships is created.
Kids feel like they can be themselves, that the relationships that are being built between staff and students, students and students is tremendous. And they really know how to make people feel comfortable here.
They make it a comfortable environment so you know that you can go to a professional teacher and say, "I'm really struggling with this. Can you help me? Can I have extra assignments so I can practice?" And it's not a school of 1,000 or 2,000. It's really nice because every single teacher knows you by your first name. Even the teachers I haven't had in my four years here, they know who I am, and it's like that for everyone.
It's a strong school community, and students, I talk to them in the cafeteria in the morning or just around school, and I don't get the normal "school." They want to be here. They're excited to learn. They're really excited to venture into their technical areas, but also on the academic side, they really want to be in class, which is great.
No matter what career path you take out of high school, I think it sets a good foundation, a good base of skill sets. You learn a trade, you learn something that someone can never take away from you.
I know it sounds kind of dramatic, but like changed my life because it's a trade that I have. It's something that I can do for the rest of my life, and it's a fallback, but it's also part of my career. And I don't think a lot of people realize that, like, you come out of the school with a lot more than you would any other high school.
I think the students at Old Colony Regional have the opportunity to focus on their academic work, but also to specialize in a skill set that will help them for the rest of their life. And our job is not just to prepare kids for the graduation stage. Our job is to set kids up to have the best possible life.
The people that work here really appreciate and love the students. They want to see them succeed, not only in what they're doing in the day-to-day work with their classes and their shops, but they want to make sure that they're learning the skills that they can take with them after they graduate, whether they go to college or to the trade, any type of workforce.
We have a number of students that do continue on to college, and really, they're ahead of their counterparts. They're actually, depending on where they go to college, they may have the credit articulated for them at that college level. As far as out in the workforce, it's the same thing. Our students start their entry level, their introductory work, kind of out on co-op. The employers see the value in our students and want them to be part, and a lot of our co-op opportunities then turn into full-time employment opportunities or positions that they can continue while they are going to take college courses and they're continuing their college education, they continue their, you know, working at their co-op during that time.
Gives you a skill right out of high school. I mean, I still want to go to college because that's something I've always thought that would be useful in my education, but you can get a job right out of here. And the thing is, is that when you go to this folk school, you're going to have to kind of step up from everyone.
I think this high school really pays attention to learning environments that are best for students, and it really caters to how students learn best in a classroom, and teachers aren't afraid to be innovative and new and really try things that are working for students where other high schools might be apprehensive to let students have that freedom, and I really think this school embraces that.
I felt like I really received a lot of attention from the teachers. It's a tight-knit community. I know it continues to be that way to this very day, and it really gave me the chance to flourish and to really, you know, see what my strengths were.
I think it's an incredible experience to be able to come here and to fit into a family of, you know, 300 to 400 people. It's unlike any other experience.
Most high schools, you go to your -- just a number. You're treated as statistic. I think when you come here, you know, the teachers will really look out for you, and not too many high schools are not for that.
This school is like no other. There's just something special about it that people need to know, that when you send your child here, you're sending them to a safe environment, and you're sending them to a place where people truly care about their well-being.
We want to take care of those things first and foremost. And once a student feels comfortable, and we connect with them, and we teach them to connect with the world outside our walls, we can move into a creative phase. And when we create a vocational school, unbelievable things happen. We open doors for futures, and we can truly help students to wrap the pathway for their life. It's inspiring for the student. It allows the student to inspire the people around them. Our students are decorated, and our students have an ability to do some things that high school students don't typically accomplish, and we're proud of that.
Excuse me just one second. Peter, we've got a report from TV Land that they have a completely dead screen with no sound.
Yeah, I already notified you.
Okay. Thank you. Just those Nielsen ratings, so.
Worries.
Anyway, that was great. Thank you. Please continue.
So, what we try to do is keep our communities updated via our Facebook posts and social media presence. If you're a part of the Carver community and you see the Carver Facebook page, what we've done is, on a weekly basis, we'll continuously post information about the school, about our students, so that people can feel as though they're kept in a loop. Some of the things we're most proud of, and I could talk about Old Colony for hours, and I know I have only a few minutes, so I'll
Take your time.
Certainly respect that. But a few highlights that we've put together for this evening are recent information about our early college programming that's been taking place with BCC. We received these statistics this week. It's the last page of your handout. And basically, what it shows is a number of southeast schools and the percent of the population -- of their school population that's enrolled in early college programming through Bristol Community College. We led that group with a 6.5 percentage of our -- 6.5% of our student body. We're working diligently to dispel the idea that our students do not go to college. That's a really important message. Vocational education now is not what it was perhaps 20 years ago, and we're working diligently to make sure that we're clear in the definition of what it is we do. In addition to that, we also want folks to know that the old model still exists, that students who want to go to industry choose to go to industry and can be very successful in that vein as well. We highlighted last Monday a recent graduate from the class of 2017 who is currently working for an electrical contractor out of Canton and doing extremely well for himself, making more annually than I'll pay for four years of my oldest daughter's college. So, it's a very astute awakening for many of us because it's very important that the decisions that these students make beyond their high school education are informed decisions and that they have options, and we're proud that we're able to provide them with these options. The other piece that I think supports the education that we're providing, because many people will say, "Well, how do you provide an academic education when there's so much of a focus on the vocational piece?" And the Standard Times newspaper printed the MCAS results from this past year, and that's the second page of your handout. And in those results, it very clearly identified that we had the highest ELA and highest math scores of all of the southeast high schools listed on this handout. In addition to that, I believe our science score was up relatively high, but the competitive piece in me says we weren't first, and so we're not done, right? We don't ride the MCAS train. That's not why we're in high schools. Whether or not our students do incredibly well on the MCAS or not, to be quite honest with six children of my own, is not of great importance to me, and I don't want to fall into that trap ever. I think that the most important piece of what we do is exemplified by the young lady sitting next to me. Amanda Hannan is a Carver resident. When I was notified that I'd have the opportunity to be here today, it was coincidental and almost serendipitous that Amanda is the recipient of the 2019 Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year Award and will be recognized at Mechanics Hall in Worcester in April. We just informed her of that. We are incredibly proud of that accomplishment. Amanda, along with so many of our other students, is a model of what we expect to present to our community on behalf of our communities. And for that reason, I thought it was important, A, to highlight her accomplishment, but also to give folks the opportunity perhaps to present her with any questions they may have about her experience. She's a very articulate young lady. She represents us extremely well. She is top in her class of 129 students, and I think it brings me great pride to let you know that she is a resident of the Carver community. So, with that being said, I'd probably conclude my presentation. I would like to invite our select folks to Old Colony to join us for lunch. I know that we've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Matrowski and -- did I say that right? I'm sorry, Melonowski. Sorry, Melonowski. Matrowski's from a cartoon on TV.
Same person.
Yeah, pretty much the same thing.
So, Mr. Melonowski came in and joined us for lunch, and actually, we were able to build some wonderful collaborative work, not only through his ties to the town of Carver, but also with Brenda Johnson, who's one of our alum and represents Edeville Railroad, where our students have done a lot of intern work. And that's been a really exciting piece of our programming and growth. So, I would like to invite you all to join us for a tour and perhaps lunch at Old Colony. If we can do it as a group, that's wonderful, and if we can't do it as a group and we'd like to do it individually, please consider the offer. I think if you haven't had the opportunity to join us recently, you'll be more than thrilled to see what it is that's going on at Old Colony. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And let's start off by maybe giving Amanda a little round of applause.
Yeah. Great job.
Thank you.
And we'll put you on the spot and let you speak now.
So, originally, I went to Old Colony because I've always wanted to be an interior designer. And to me, Old Colony kind of seemed to be a chance to further, to get one step ahead, as the video kind of mentioned several times. I originally went there wanting to participate in the CAD program. I ended up in carpentry because I suddenly discovered that I can't sit in a chair all day. So, through my experiences at Old Colony, I've discovered that I love furniture making. I want to eventually make business that has -- is multifaceted and deals with a lot of aspects of home design, so from furniture making to interior design, realty and remodeling services. And I feel that my experiences at Old Colony have helped me put all that together in one business, and I will be very sad to leave there in the spring.
Thank you. Questions from the board for Amanda or Mr. Palatny? I'm sorry.
Oh, what a thing.
Mr. Chairman, if I just could, I went for a tour of the facility, as was mentioned, with Superintendent Neef about two years ago. And his name's easy. And it's just an incredible resource that he and I, when we left, you know, knew about, but we didn't know as much as we knew after going there. And some of the programs that they have, it's all state-of-the-art. It's 21st century cutting-edge technology that they're doing there, you know, beyond the, you know, some of the new trades that they're putting in there. And again, I think we were just overall impressed as to how, you know, they're trying to transition kids into a different type of workforce and with the technology that was behind there. Just incredible.
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. Your attitude or your general being about your school is just catching. I don't know what the word I'm reaching for here is, but you can see it in your student, in your product. And I absolutely believe that she will pass that love of that school on and her leadership abilities in anything that she goes after from this point on. And I think it's mostly doing part because of the leadership at that school. I'm very impressed with what you said and how you said it, so. Great job.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just, I can't express how really impressive you are bringing it all out, and I kind of hope that, you know, that you're representative of all the students in there, that they all take the pride that you obviously show in your school. I know, having been a longtime town resident and back, my much younger brother went to Old Colony, and it's changed, you know. The old stereotype was in effect back then, because this was back in the 80s. You're probably too young to remember those. But it's so good to hear that it's, you know, really evolving, and I think that's a great thing. It's a great alternative for the students of Carver to be able to participate in, and I thank you for the hard work that you've done, and good luck to you in the future. I know you don't really need it because you're going to do just fine.
Thank you.
And I'll just echo some of Mr. Melonowski's comments. I have had the opportunity to tour the school, and I've always been impressed by the facilities. And the positive attitude that everyone seems to have down there, and that's clearly reflected in the statistics that you gave us. Everyone's doing a wonderful job. And Amanda, congratulations to you. Obviously, you have a bright future ahead, and thank you for all your hard work. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't make a shameless effort to see whether or not, since we're building a new police station, and there's, we have to build a back building, whether there might be some assistance that could be provided by the expertise in your student population to help us when we get to that point in time.
And before you answer that question, the police chief's ready. He won't let you leave the room until this is brought in.
So, we look for opportunities to contribute to our sending communities, and I think that the first step would be for us to sit together and just get an understanding of the scope of the project and then have some talks about what the expectations may be. I know for us, when it's a learning lab and the materials are paid for by the sending districts, that's actually a win-win because you save in terms of your labor, and we save on materials that we'd be paying for in a classroom otherwise. So, I think it really warrants sitting down together and having a conversation, at which point we can evaluate what needs to be done and maybe take some steps to move in that direction. But it's certainly a big part of why we exist and what we look forward to doing.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, completely, partially, but not completely. But no, we know that
I figured, with all due respect, that we had had some conversations at one point about something like that happening, and members of our school committee who are here, Mr. Williams, Mrs. Pouscar, Mr. Banzel, have all had conversations on behalf of the town with me about the possibility of that. And so, we look forward to those opportunities, and we would love to open up the discussions further.
Great. I worry it was snack bars.
Snack bars?
Yeah.
I like chocolate, if that's what you're asking.
Amanda, where -- so what does the future hold for you?
Well, as I said, I want to, I'm probably going to end up at UMass Dartmouth in the fall, studying business management with a concentration in small business entrepreneurship. Eventually, I want to open up a business. I want to start with doing furniture making and kind of work my way up, adding different facets of the home industry to it, such as interior design, realty, remodeling, stuff like that.
I somehow feel I'm going to be contacting you in about five years for some furniture or for some assistance in home design, so I'm looking forward to that.
Or flip this house.
Pardon me?
Flip this house.
And I imagine you must have a good audiovisual department at the school?
We've just, we've just recently started something called the OCTV Initiative. Through a grant, we received a $40,000 grant and some matching gifts as well from ORCTV and Lake Cam to help us start a TV station. And so, basically, what we did was we turned an old closet into a TV studio. We felt as though the Skills USA jackets could hang somewhere else, and that use of that space would be better set up to allow the students access to a creative outlet. And have, and again, when you come in, we'd love to show you a little bit of what that looks like. But to give you an idea of the enthusiasm, and again, I could talk to you all night about this, but three years ago, we had 188 applicants at Old Colony. Last year, in total, at the end of the year, we had 286. Today, Mr. Banzel stopped by, and we were peeking at my computer, and we had 272, and we're not nearly done with the year. Things are, things have really taken off, and I'm super proud of the staff and the students that are at the core of that. And any opportunity we have to share that with you and to bring people in to really celebrate that with us, we welcome. So, we hope that, you know, we'll have that opportunity at some point. Mike Matrowski was the former MIT wrestling coach, so just
As opposed to Mike Melonowski.
It wasn't a cartoon. It just came to me.
One thing I'd mention is that we're part of Area 58 TV, and so, if at any time, and that consists of Plimpton, Halifax, and Carver, if at any time we can provide any assistance to what you're doing or resources or whatever it might be, utilizing the studio there, absolutely contact us. We'd love to work with you on that. Because what I was getting at is, what I'd love to see produced is a nice video of, similar to what we saw, that we could put out on our local programming, because, you know, I think it was, what, back in '88 that Carver High School opened? It was just great. Everyone likes to have their own community high school, but I think Old Colony got lost in the rush and, you know, the love of the idea, you want to go to your own high school, because it, I called it a hidden gem at the start. It is truly something that I think if more parents were really aware of what we have there, that as much as there's an allure to go to a high school in your hometown, there, if to not give serious consideration to what we have there at Old Colony is, they're doing their, their children an injustice to take a look at that. So, getting some, getting some publicity out there and, you know, something that they can sit down and watch either on the website or on TV, you know, we can work with you and try to put some, do something like that.
That would be wonderful. This is, again, serendipitous. We were just having that conversation seven minutes before I sat down at this table about how do we build that relationship with the local TV station in Carver so that we can put things like that on, onto the TV station and make people more aware of the opportunities that are available to the Carver population. We have a summer discovery program that we just put in place for the younger kids to come in and actually explore through a week of sports and then another week of vocational education. I believe Amanda was a piece of that at one point in terms of instruction for the younger students. But there are so many opportunities that we promote through, again, social media, but haven't had the opportunity to promote, as you've said, through the local TV station. So, as you were speaking, I couldn't stop smiling at just the idea that these thoughts are so aligned. It's wonderful.
And please use me as a contact for getting, getting involved with the state, with our studio. And when we're also looking for talent, we need people to run interviews and so that, you know, this might be some good karma there.
That would be wonderful. I know our business tech instructors would be certainly gracious in terms of accepting that offer. And again, I can't thank you enough. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to just share, share so much of what we're proud of. So, thank you for the time.
Before you go, could you just take a moment or two and just talk about the five-year-plus plan for Old Colony and what you see as some of the improvements that are coming down the pipeline as far as your long-range planning?
Sure. There's a big push right now for us to expand programming. Right now, I think that we have to investigate what space allows, because if you take a walk through the facility, you'll see that the classrooms are certainly packed. There's not a lot of room to put additional programming, but there's certainly been talk of additional Chapter 74 programming. The other piece that we're looking at is facility upgrades. So, when you look at our athletic field in the video, it certainly doesn't look like the field in Carver. We'd love to be able to provide our students with a more state-of-the-art, you know, facility. However, over the last three years, we've secured over $800,000 in capital skills competitive grants, so that we try to make sure that by doing so, we save our sending districts the assessments that would have otherwise been encumbered as a result of the purchase of that capital equipment. So, the savings in close to $1 million, or, you know, it's actually $800,000, to be more accurate, is something we're super proud of. But if we want to remain state-of-the-art, we have to constantly look at what it is we're doing. We have our advisory boards that speak on behalf of industry and tell us what the cutting-edge, up-to-date supplies look like. But for the most part, I think it's mostly facilities-focused. We've done a wonderful job with the early college access. We just started a early college entrepreneurship program where students are on track to earn credits towards a business degree, and that complements perhaps the ideas that Amanda has shared. But also, for a student who says, "You know, I really don't want to go to college, but I want to start my own business," it gives them the knowledge through college courses to study business and also focus on their program of choice at Old Colony. But again, I think it would be mostly facilities-based. I'm very proud of what we've been doing in terms of our staffing. We're adding AP courses, which is also part of that plan. And historically, we did not offer AP. We found a lot of people said, "You know, if you offered AP, my student might consider attending." And so, we have to take that into consideration. So, AP English, AP Math, AP Computer Science will all be on the docket for next year as well.
Wonderful. Well, thank you both very much. Really appreciate you coming in. Hopefully, that is going to be captioned. We'll be able to at least replay it if it didn't go out live tonight. And Amanda, we wish you the very best. We may ask you back in a few years to see how your entrepreneurship is going, and certainly very proud that you're doing so well and representing the town so well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polanski. Thank you, Ms. Blansky.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're now the five police officers, so I'm not sure you're going to get out of here.
Next, I'd ask Donna Farand to step forward. Going to have a video on senior bullying and some discussion.
So I just wanted to say, I'm a 40-year, 41-year graduate of Old Colony from Carver.
All right, come in.
Hello. I'm new in this community. Do you mind if I join you?
Sorry, we don't have any more room at this table and we're in the middle of the game. Maybe next time.
Well, okay.
I heard that he was evicted from his apartment. We don't want him to play with us. There's something wrong with him.
I didn't know that.
Don't even talk to him. They say he's out of it.
He's always by himself, often crying. There's something wrong with him.
He's the only new-
Grandpa, what's wrong?
Nothing. I feel fine.
I know when you're fine and you're clearly not fine.
Well, this place isn't as friendly as, as the last place I was at. I feel that they're talking about me. I feel I'm bullied.
We'll talk to the staff about this. We're so proud of you for bringing this up.
Okay, here's an ace.
Hi, everybody. I'm new to this community. Could I join you?
It's the middle of the game and we really don't have room, but maybe next time.
Oh.
You know what? I heard that she was evicted from her apartment. There must be something wrong with her.
Enough of this gossip. Don't you ever get tired of it? Let's go, Sam.
Let's start anew again. Hi, I'm Sam.
Hi, I'm Nancy.
Welcome to our community.
Thank you.
So I just, basically, I just wanted just to say a couple of things about the video itself and, so in no way does a video imply anything specific in the town, but I did want to just talk a little bit. Instead, we'll find it shows how simply excluding and gossiping about someone is considered bullying. And a lot of people don't realize that gossiping and excluding somebody is considered bullying. And I care about our town and I myself do have to remember to be more respectful and kinder and caring, but more importantly, kindness starts in our heart and by being more respectful, appreciative, hopeful, loving, and encouraged, encouraging. It can start with me, it can start with all five of our selectmen, it can start with our town administrator, our employees, our students, our residents. It just starts with all of us and that's what's so important here. And, and as we saw here in the video, and when we leave here tonight, I hope that we can all make a commitment to reach a handout for kindness, greet the person that's being excluded, stop the gossip in its trap, stand up for the excluded person. It's time we hope and heal our town and it starts with us. You are here and those who are watching because you really care. To all those who volunteer in any capacity in this town, I appreciate you, I respect you, and I support you. I hope to see everyone that is committed to our small town come out on March 15th at 6:30 at the high school and get inspired and, and show us, everybody, how wonderful our town really is because we can do it, we can make the change, and we can come together and stop what is happening in our town. And I just wanted just to say thank you to everyone who's here tonight and the selectmen and town administrator for allowing me to show the video.
Any comments from the board?
Well done.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add, it's funny, I have a six-year-old granddaughter and she's in kindergarten and bumping into, you know, some of the things that go on in kindergarten. And really, when you think of it, all through our lives, every stage of our lives, even when you're, you know, around the office cooler, you know, people love to tell stories and it's, you've got to remember that, as, as the video describes, bullying can happen at any age. And you don't think of senior bullying, but, you know, just, it always, you know, if you just always treat other people the way you'd want to be treated, it's tough to go wrong. So thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, and I think it's important too. If you don't know the facts about a story, go discover it yourself. Don't listen to what somebody else is telling you. Go out and research and do the research because I find sometimes people want to mislead us and give us the wrong facts. So I, I think I've probably gone to at least four of you in this room, or five of you in this room, because I wanted to get the facts myself and I didn't want to be misled by social media. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm just on that, Donna is one of the newer members down at the COA Board of Directors and, you know, the board down there has already seen this video and they've been trying to, you know, address how they get more people into the facility. And a few months ago, we were going through kind of a budget discussion and, you know, part of the discussion went along the lines of, you know, over the last few years, we've added more staff down the COA, we've added more programmings, and there's more opportunities for people to get involved. And the follow-up question was, well, how much of has our attendance gone up? And actually, what they said is the attendance has gone down. And, and I think that with Donna bringing this forward and working with Carol Julius and the other members, it's trying to address how they encourage people to come into the COA versus those that are discouraged when they come in and, and how it's opened up for everybody because, you know, unfortunately, some people just don't have any other choice but to go to that facility. We want it to be a warm, welcoming environment and, and Donna's efforts are starting to help change that so that we can get past some of the negativity that sometimes happens.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
All right, and now it's our pleasure to have the swearing-in of our new police sergeant, Brian Barialt.
Not bad.
I'll turn this over to Chief Doofly.
This is definitely one of the best parts of my job is be able to talk to you about how we're moving our police department, your police department, forward. And this is just another example of it tonight. So tonight, I'm very, very happy and proud to bring before you Carver's newest police sergeant for his formal swearing-in and badge-pinning ceremony. In accordance with the vote taken at the last lock-in meeting, Officer Brian Barialt has been promoted to the rank of sergeant. Tonight, we formally recognize that achievement with a swearing-in and badge-pinning ceremony. Sergeant Barialt has been with the Carver Police Department since August of 2014, when he lateraled in from Wareham, and he's been a police officer since 2005. Over the past four-plus years, Sergeant Barialt has proven to be a valuable member of the CPD team. He has used his experience from Wareham to make good criminal cases in Carver. He has participated in our community policing efforts, including teaching at the City's Police Academy, and he has participated as a member of the Police Station Building Committee. He has proven himself dedicated to our community and extremely capable of his job. I have every confidence that Sergeant Barialt will excel at his new duties. Tonight, he'll be sworn in by Town Clerk Lynn Doyle and then his wife Sasha will pin his sergeant's badge on him. Mr. Chairman, if I get you to authorize the clerk to swear in Sergeant Barialt, we can get that done.
Absolutely. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Invite all the selectmen up forward, please.
You don't have to get that far away.
Good, why don't you guys get behind us?
It's all right, Brian, a lot of people have that same reaction. Run.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Barialt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And will support the Constitution and laws thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Brian, if you stand, it's not, it'll be a problem.
And why don't we ask his fellow officers to come up and get a picture taken with him at the same time?
Yeah, there you go.
Take that, you, for the background. Just take that. Get away the background. Try to keep Officer Ruzudo to the back, please.
How you doing?
I'm taking a picture, I'm still, I'm coming. I'm zooming in, smile.
Do you have to salute him now?
I like that. I don't even want to know this.
He thought he was going to do this. Brian, you're terrible at this. He did.
Yeah, I guess it's still on me.
One, you have a good one, sure.
Thank you, everybody. Now, we're going to step next door and have a cake, so if anybody wants a cake, we'll bring it to you.
Thank you, Chief.
I hope there's no crime going on in town right now.
That's what I'm going to say. We had every hole tonight.
Okay. Now, we move on to appointments to the Cable Advisory Committee. As people may be aware, this is a, every 10 years, we renew our license with Comcast and they remain the only game in town. We did contact Verizon and because we have so few subscribers and so many miles of cabling that it's just not cost-effective for them to want to come into town with FiOS. So we're, we're with Comcast and it limits our leverage, but not completely. We still have some, some leverage we can use, so we're going to begin negotiations, have to wrap those up by November. So we have five people to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. It's an ad hoc committee, advisory committee. It would disband after the completion of the contract. We have Al Winters, Jay John, Dan Ginnity, and Patrick Mahar. And I would also request to be reappointed as your representative. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion that we appoint those folks to the Cable Advisory Committee.
I second.
Further discussion? There being none? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I know, I see Mr. Winters and Mr. John here. Did you, folks, would you like to come up and say anything now that you've been, have this esteemed appointment? You can introduce each other.
Well, I just-
Please come to the microphone, Mr. John, which you've never been shy of. Name and address, please.
Jay John, 80 South Meadow Road. I have to say that for the last, I've lived in town for about almost 40 years and Ron Clark has been trying to get me to do something in the town since then and has finally succeeded. He, I retired about 11 years ago and he thought I was home doing nothing and I needed some, something to do to kill the time and at the same time be of service to my wonderful town, which I really love this town. And I'm sure it shows, it has shown in my conduct here, my, and the people I've got to meet. And I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity and I'll do my best to help the Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here's the other openings on other committees.
He, he has been trying to do that, too.
And thank, thank Rhonda for giving you permission to get on the committee.
Thank you.
That's his life. Al, would you like to say something?
Sure. I'd be swayed if you did.
I had the pleasure of working with Al on the Senior Tax Relief Committee and that has finally got passed. I think, as you know, Al, it has to go to the ballot now in town for April, but I'm told that by the time it gets to the April ballot, the state will have done something to supersede all our efforts. But nevertheless, we tried.
We tried. And it wasn't for lack of work on your part. My name's Al Winters and I live at 36 Melanie in Meadow Woods. I served on a cable advisory committee for another town, you know, earlier. And you find out that you really don't have a lot of power and there's a lot of things you can't do. You can't tell them what to charge, you can't tell them what programs to put on, and you're basically working with what they, how they work with a town and some, some things that people don't think are too important, but when you add everything up, there are things that the town can do to make the service a little bit more palatable. Everyone has their favorite programs, they get canceled, they have their rates that everyone thinks is too much, and they are. But you just try to work, work with them and have a good relationship and hope everything comes out a little bit better each time you renegotiate the contract. That's about it.
Thank you very much. And just so you both know, some of what the issues are going to be in this upcoming renewal is the FCC is entertaining legislation that has come in or recommendations that have come in from the major cable firms to cut back support for local access TV. All, all the filming that takes place of all the government meetings comes from monies that are provided by Comcast to, in this case, the towns of Halifax, Carver, and Plimpton. And they're attempting to try to suggest to the FCC that they be able to cut back on that funding. So that's one of the issues we're going to be dealing with. And then something else I think that's sort of important is to see if we can't get some of our local programming on some of the HD channels as opposed to the non-HD channels. And so those will be just some of the issues that we'll be talking about as, in addition to obviously the rates and the packages and whatnot.
Right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to the town administrator update.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I see Mr. Jermaine here and he could probably give the first part of my update.
All right, Mr. Jermaine, it's, the first part of the update was on the Finance Committee meetings to review budgets. Pardon me?
My wife should be happy to do that.
Well, there are two meetings. One, you take one, she can take the other.
Yeah, that's right. One, the agenda, will you?
And we're just looking for an update, we're just looking for an update on what is going on at the Finance Committee with your review of budgets.
Well, we met, in fact, I think you were there. We met the, when was the last meeting?
Two weeks ago.
Something like that. With the fire, I wasn't prepared at all. With the fire department, police, and EMS. And as usual, you know, they did a great job on their budgets. Unfortunately, I think that the, the police are at a disadvantage because there's no place to really cut and control their, their expenses and stay safe in the town. And I'm all for giving the chief whatever he needs. I think he put together a great budget. Chief Weston did a great job with the fire department and, and God bless Tom. The EMS does a super job also, so we had no problem with that. That was a unanimous vote across the board to send it to you guys for the warrant.
It's on cable.
Sorry? It's, and it was, the whole meeting was on cable, so it's on Area 58 for replay. This coming Thursday is the Town Officers, which is planning, clerics-
Okay, we move to the Town Administrator Update.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I see Mr. Jermaine here, and he could probably give the first part of my update.
All right, Mr. Jermaine, it's, the first part of the update was on the Finance Committee meetings to review budgets. Pardon me?
Well, there are two meetings. One, you take one, she can take the other.
Yeah, that's right.
Be the agenda, will you?
If we're just looking for an update, we're just looking for an update on what is going on at the Finance Committee with your review of budgets.
Well, we met, in fact, I think you were there. We met the, when was the last meeting?
Two weeks ago.
Something like that. With the fire, I wasn't prepared at all. With the fire department, police, and EMS. And as usual, you know, they did a great job on their budgets. Unfortunately, I think that the police are at a disadvantage because there's no place to really cut and control their, their expenses and stay safe in the town. And I'm all for giving the chief whatever he needs. I think he put together a great budget. Chief Weston did a great job with the fire department, and, and God bless Tom. The EMS does a super job also, so we had no problem with that. That was a unanimous vote across the board to send it to you guys for the warrant. Sorry? It's, and it was, the whole meeting was on cable, so it's on Area 58 for replay. This coming Thursday is the Town Officers, which is Planning, Cleric, Finance, and then COA, Library, and Recreation. And we have also, that's on the table still, is some discussion about a grant program for the nonprofits, and I think we're going to try to continue on the stretch code discussion to the next meeting, because it's just a lot. The 21st, you are on.
So, the 21st is outside Town Hall Operations, Maintenance, and Veterans. So, we're going to look at their budgets and vote on that, and at that point, I think that will be everyone, and we'll have the recommendation to the Selectmen. School Committee, we are not going to meet with the school, because they will come and do their own for you guys.
We kind of thought that would be, the reason we did this this year was to keep the individual department heads from having to come before the Finance Committee, then separately come again before the Selectmen, or if the Selectmen chose to have a joint meeting, which really made these people, these department heads jump through the hoop a couple of times. And we thought that was a lot of work to ask them to do for what would most likely not encounter a lot of resistance, and it's going to wind up on the warrant anyway, it's going to go before Tommy. So, the meetings are open. If there, if there's a quorum for the Board of Selectmen that show up at the meeting, then you're more than welcome to sit in on it. If there's, when it's time for the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, that's going to simply be a, a vote to recommend to send to you guys. If you have a question, then the department heads would probably be in the audience to answer that question, but the whole idea was to streamline the process and make it a little bit easier on, on, on the Board of Selectmen, easier on the department heads, and keep the Finance Department a little bit more involved in, in the nuts and bolts of what's going on. So, the School Committee, I think we, we all agreed, there's not a lot we can do with that budget, so.
But I, I think it is good to talk about it. I was going to suggest that when we schedule them.
Yes.
We should alert you, and we could have a joint meeting perhaps with them.
I think that's a great idea, but I couldn't see bringing the School Committee, Scott and Brad before the Finance Department of the Committee, and then again before the Selectmen to get, to give you the exact same story.
Yep. No, I think it's a good idea. So, we'll, we'll make sure that when we get it scheduled, we'll alert you folks, so you could hopefully join us at that time.
Al, would you just take a moment and talk about the other initiatives that you're looking at? Like you said, the stretch code and turning in some of the citizen petitions, petitions into grant program for nonprofits.
So, for the grant.
I knew you'd take the easy one. Go ahead.
So, for the grant project that we're doing is, we found, Mr. Milonowski pointed out that every year, more and more nonprofits are asking for funds from the town, and it's put on the town warrant, and it's the last thing we vote on, and I don't know, we're all a little tired, and we just say yes, and we go on our merry way. We want to put some checks and balances and put some, you know, make it a little, so we know what's happening with that money. So, it is $25,000?
$25,000.
And each nonprofit would have a max of $5,000, and there would be an application, and then the Finance Committee would vote on that application.
They'd be expected to meet certain requirements?
Yes, and we're putting, we're in the, putting that framework together now.
So, I guess it's going to be proposed. I mean, I think this year, we're going to do it the way we've always done it. There'll be, at the end of the town meeting budget, we'll have the regulations in there. What's being proposed is changing the way we do it in the future.
We're really not sure how we're doing that this year.
So, it could be that we ask the town to vote against the warrant article that, from the citizen's petition, and then vote for this grant process.
Which will still give them the money. The problem is with this whole grant program, and I understand, with this whole petitions article, and I understand the town of Carver's been doing this for 100 years, it's a wonderful idea. Me personally, if you want to donate to a charity, you should write your own check and not take taxpayer money, but the fact that we've always done that, I see no reason to not do that, except when I spoke with Lynn Doyle and Meg, who both reminded me that this is against the law to use taxpayer funding for a nonprofit organization unless, and the only caveat, unless the town gets something in return. Well, if we vote a money article at the 11th hour, when everybody's tapping their toes waiting to adjourn, and this year it's $23,000, so it's not like it's, you know, just a couple of bucks. There is no backdoor, there is no oversight, there is no come back to us in six months, and what'd you do with the money? You get 10 signatures on a warrant, you write up a little piece of paper, and it's bang, it's on the, it's an article, and you vote on it. There's no accountability to it. The idea of the grant program is that we would put forth an application, you'd fill out the application, you'd have to be a 501(c)(3) corporation, up to $5,000, with a cap on the entire program of $25,000, makes budgeting a whole lot easier, and then you'd come before the Finance Committee with what do you want to do with that money? The Finance Committee would vet it, vote on it, have the power, if town meeting sees fit, to allow us to grant that money, and then six, eight, nine months from now, their response would come back to us with an accounting of what'd you do with the money? Where did it go? Who did it benefit, and how many people did it benefit?
And to your point, let's say it was a domestic abuse organization, you would want to see evidence that money's.
Right, we couldn't have names.
No, no, but, but, right, but that, that people, citizens of Carver are the beneficiary of that, yes.
Not that I don't want, I don't expect that, that we'd have to figure something out in the wording where, you know, it would be 50%, 60%, 70%, 75% of the funds go to Carver, so perfect example is, is domestic abuse. We gave them $5,000, they serviced, or they, they helped 110 Carver residents that totaled $3,900, and they helped, the balance was Plymouth. Okay, we're okay with that. It's not like we're going to take that, you owe us that money back. Doesn't need to be 100% back to Carver, but I think it's going to eliminate some of the organizations from thinking that this is an ongoing funding of their operation, so.
All right, and then you were going to take the more difficult subject?
Just before we leave that one, there is one update that you read in the paper recently, that the Y-PAC is no longer offering programs next fall. The director of the Y-PAC came to me and stated that they would like to withdraw their request. However, because it's been certified, they can't withdraw it, so they're going to have to withdraw it on town meeting floor, but that's just a quick update on that, that to show.
The sad thing about Y-PAC is tell them why they're withdrawing their request.
Well, I think there's, there's many reasons, and, and one of them is that, you know, they, they haven't got as much support as they really need to run the program.
In terms of volunteers.
These are volunteers, and they also hired students to help, you know, provide some counseling, not counseling, but the, the staff, if you will, and that runs about $40,000 a year. A lot of their benefactors with the cranberry industry are suffering right now and don't have the extra funds to put towards that, and I think when they were out doing a fundraiser, it was the same time that one of the turkeys was injured, and there was a GoFundMe page, and the community decided to spend more on GoFunding the turkey with a, you know, brain the size of a pea, when they're trying to help, you know, young children that need, that have challenges, and trying to provide them a safe sanctuary to, to learn and be educated. And I think that was, you know, what I heard, one of the straws that broke the camel's back, is that we're clearly not getting the support we need, and, you know, some of these people were funding it out of their own pocket, buying snacks week after week for the kids, and they said, we, we just can't continue to do this anymore, because the, the volunteerism has gone down, the donations are going down, but the need's there, but we just can't be responsible for privately doing this ourselves anymore.
And that's a shame, when, you know, I mean, I'm thinking, I was looking to go buy a can of cranberry sauce, and, and, you know, people are concerned about the turkey, so, but that's me.
The stretch code, sir.
I'm going to go up to Rochester this Monday, and it's.
Could you pull the mic in tight, please?
The stretch code, I have a, I have a mixed feeling on the stretch code. The stretch code, when we tried this before, apparently there was, there was quite a distance between the state building code and the stretch code, so much so that it got shot down a couple of times, I guess, at town meeting. Now, of course, they're offering grants, and I want to make sure that the grants they're offering, and actually, the whole committee wants to make sure that the grants they're offering is not the carrot, because grants always come with a string, is not the carrot, so that it can just get worse and worse and worse. But they've redone the state building codes, that, as far as what I see of it so far, they've redone the state building codes, so they've gotten very close to what is now the stretch code. And everything I've read so far says that the difference between the two, the cost of, of you building a new house in the stretch code versus you building a brand-new house not in the stretch code, is somewhere between $800 and $1,500, up to $2,000 tops, depends upon the size of your house.
Used to be a bigger number.
Used to be much bigger, and that's really only now for the certification, where they have to bag the house and do whatever it is they do to get you to that hers certification. It doesn't apply to remodels, it doesn't apply to additions, it does, they've relaxed some of those rules, and there's a lot of grant money available. Acushnet took advantage to the tune of almost $700,000. Rochester's in it, Middleborough is in it, there's, what, 47% of the communities in the state amassed, I think, and now.
More than that.
Has it gone up since then?
I think it's 40,000 in there.
So, and, and part of that whole stretch code community is part of the green community, which is going to deal with emissions and energy conservation, but they'll come in here and, you know, we could get a grant to put all the LED lighting in, in the Town Hall. We could maybe do all LED streetlights, cut down the cost of us, of our, of our lighting in town. That could all be built into that grant money. So, it's worth looking at from that angle, and then, commercial vehicles are exempt, so they're not going to force us to buy electric fire engines and electric police cars. I think what could be beneficial to the town and possibly with future grants is, and I, I happen to just think real quick about the Board of Health Pickup Truck, which is a small, little S10-type pickup truck, something like that could be electric. You know what I mean? He doesn't leave Carver, and it's not running around 12 hours a day, so something like that, very efficient, could be electric. We could possibly get some funding to put some electric recharging stations in. I think it's, I think it's a thing that's going to happen eventually. If we don't join it as, as a volunteer, I think that the codes are going to come up to a point where we're going to be a stretch community, whether we want to or not, because the state codes are going to continue to strengthen, and they're going to be equal. So, if we're going to end up there anyway, three, four, five years from now, six years from now, why not get to that point if there's a benefit to the town financially, and it's not overly restrictive, which I don't think if you're building, honestly, if you're building a $400,000 house, you're really going to stress over another couple thousand bucks? Aren't you going to want an insulated tight house anyway? Aren't you going to want, and it'd be different if you, part of the green community was you will then put solar on your roof, you will, you, you know, if it was going to be a big number, I don't think it is. I'm trying to find out the actual pros and cons of that. I'd like to hear from a builder who says, yeah, it's great, and I'd like to hear from a builder who says, no, this absolutely sucks, and I don't want no part of it. Why? It's, it's one thing to go to the town that's adopted it and say, well, why'd you do it? And then you have them tell you, well, you know, we got $600,000 in grant money, but is that the real reason why?
I'm thinking that when you join us to meet with the School Committee, perhaps we can put this in the agenda for a discussion as well, because you may be further along with your discovery on this and can share those findings with us at that time.
That's going to be on, I think, for the 21st. It's a continued, it's a continued item for this coming 7th, and I think it's just, there's too much going on on the 7th, so we're going to push it off to the 21st.
Great. Well, given that you both had to come up extemporaneously, we appreciate your input on this.
Well, feel free to stop in on the 7th. We're not going to have cake, but, you know.
Why not? Thank, thank you very much.
If you bring it.
All right, we move on. Oh, and again, the, the next FINCOM meetings, again, on February 7th, this coming Thursday, it's the Planning, Town Cleric, COA, Library, Recreation, and on the 21st, it's the Town Hall Operations, Maintenance, and Veterans.
Do we have a time on that?
Those are at 7 o'clock, and, you know, I, I will say, the, the Finance Committee has been actively meeting since early September on a regular basis, and it is great to have that additional review going on. It provides additional checks and balances, it provides additional viewpoints, which was helping all the department heads kind of hone their presentation, too. So, it's, I appreciate all the new people that are involved there. I was just going to say.
Update on the Police Station Recreation Complex?
Yes, a couple updates. Last Tuesday, the Recreation Committee met. They moved forward with a $600,000 request to the CPC for Phase 1. Phase 1 is a total of about $750,000 to start redoing the entire King property redevelopment and turn that into a recreation complex. That was presented by their architect to the CPC on Thursday. That was a very positive meeting. A lot of questions were asked, some misinformation because of social media was clarified, and, and they're now going forward to have their public hearing, I believe it's February 28th. It's the last week in February for the CPC. That'll allow them to either vote that night on approving the funds and/or at their next meeting the following week in order to make town meeting, but I, I think there was a lot of positive feedback on that, as well as a lot of young community residents that attended it and talked about the benefits of having the playground connected to the ballfields over there, and how there's more use that they anticipate having with that. And, and I think also, Mr. Ward was there again, who mentioned that he's toured the facility as he did to, I think, the Selectmen's meeting, and, you know, identified some of the areas that he thinks needs to be improved as well. So, that's where that stands, to move that piece forward. Moving forward to the Senior Survey.
Before you do, just a quick question. You said they put in for $600,000?
Yep.
But the project costs 700 and something?
Yes, about $749.
So, where's the difference coming from?
Sure, so with that, they're requesting not to, they're requesting $600,000 of that budget. What I also want to just bring your attention to is, this is the same process that we did for the elementary school and also for the sports turf project. When we went first to the CPC, we asked them for $1.9 million for the elementary school project. We ended up spending 1.7 as the project went forward, because we went through the same type of conceptual design with, with cost estimates before you get to the engineering analysis. Same thing happened with the, the sports field. To answer your question specifically is that, just like we were able to do two years ago with the middle high school baseball field, we went out and bought the materials, we had some materials meeting the, the turf and the bases, we had make peace through their soil, Reed Specialty Soils donate all the infield mix, we, Reed Specialty Soils, their make piece has already made an offer to help us with the field, all three of these fields. To do that, they're actually going to take some of our surplus dirt away that they can reprocess. Through the Little League and the softball leagues, we've had a lot of volunteers for electricians and plumbers and others that'll be willing to come in and donate their labor, plus some of it will be done by, by our own operation and maintenance department. The number that, that's in the quote of $749,000, that assumes that you bid everything out and hired one contractor to do it all. By having John Woods and Dave Segensoff and myself act as kind of the project managers on this, we can do many of the things in-house, and where we do need to bid things out, like the playground material or equipment and, or use a state bid list, we will bid those out, fence will build out and get three quotes for them, but there's a lot of savings that can be done if we manage it internally ourselves plus donations. So, that's how we, it's coming into the $600,000 from some sweat equity into it.
Okay, thank you.
Just also, in the Police. Just also on the police station, we did get our initial quotes back for some preliminary concept plans as to what the cost is going to be. The police station committee is going to be taking a tour Lakeville. It's a very similar type facility to look at how our building compares to theirs. We may come back and modify our plans, we may not come back and modify our plans. We're going to be looking at our development program and making sure that it does meet the needs of the police department. And if there's anything that we can do to cut back on that, we will. We're going to be talking to Old Colony about helping us with the back building as a way of trying to identify some cost savings. But as I've mentioned before, we are going to have to go to town meeting for some additional funds. We have approximately enough money to build the building, but in addition to the building, there's going to be site work, and there's going to be the furniture and fit-out and the equipment that we have to put in there, which, you know, those costs will be refined over time. And you'll be hearing at a future meeting how we're going to look at reallocating some money that we're saving from the elementary school project, as well as some other projects in the town, and some free cash to reallocate to the police station building so that we have enough funds to move that forward. So I just wanted to continue to mention that issue, too, so that... We've been saying it for two years, but every time we ask for more money, people think it's a surprise. It's not. It's in the record. We always plan on asking for more money for the police station once we had more refined costs. Moving forward, next to the senior survey for everyone in Carver who's over the age of fifty-five, we do have a task force that's been meeting with Stephen Cole to go over trying to survey any and all residents in the community that are fifty-five and older. We've heard many people say that they know what's best for the town of Carver's aging population. And, you know, as I mentioned before, we've got declining enrollment going to our senior center after putting in more money and more staffing into it. So clearly, we need to find out what people really want. That's what this survey is meant to do. We've hired a survey company to come in and assist with that. They're going to be doing it through both print, mailing, and electronically. Everyone will have the opportunity of filling out one survey per person who's over the age of fifty-five. Those results, we hope to have preliminary results from those around town meeting time. We won't have final results by town meeting time. But that'll, again, start to provide accurate information and truthful information as to what the seniors in the community as a whole... I mean, every individual person has their own plan of what they want, but we, as a board, have to look at what the majority of the population wants, which this will start to do. It's anticipated that that survey should be ready to roll out by the end of this month. And again, there'll be a lot of survey collecting through the month of March. And again, it will give us quantifiable information, so we can then start to plan as to how we look at potentially using some of the CPC resources for housing and other sources in town as to what the needs are as we progress. From there, on the Route Forty-four development, a couple of updates on that. The final environmental impact report will be released by the end of February. That's the last stage in the state permitting piece for the overall project. It's anticipated that the state should issue its permit on the project sometime in late April, so that's moving forward. The developer has been busy with some acquisitions. I think, as everybody knows, that they did purchase the Allen and Tascinari House last year. Since then, they purchased the Walsh property, which, if you go down the dirt road, is the former sewage plant on the right behind the fence. So that has been purchased. And they have executed a purchase and sale, and I believe enclosed on the property for the Tushers. So the Tushers and the developer actually came together and worked out an agreement that the Tushers felt was a fair agreement. I don't know what those numbers are. At some point, it'll be in the paper and filed, but they did reach an agreement with the developer, Route Forty-four Development. So apparently, everybody's happy on that. So those are three... Four of the properties that have been acquired to date, and that includes the three active residential that were on the site, as everyone remembers. This will also allow them to do a better realignment of the roadway as it goes down Montello and curve into the site, and then have Montello, as it goes into Plymouth, come into kind of a teak stops intersection going in that direction.
Plymouth.
Plymouth, which will be a stop sign type intersection there.
And also be able to take and use much of that one then.
That's correct. Part of this is, they are going to have some wetland impacts, that there is going to have to be a new entrance to Route Forty-four to square that up and move that a little bit away from the existing plaza that's there, just to provide some separation. So they have some conceptual plans that'll be in the final impact report on that. In addition to that, while we're talking economic development, last week, we did receive, if you recall when you did your tax rate hearing, you had an individual from Plymouth Airport who was looking to build a new hangar for his company's facilities. He has one hangar and was looking to build another one. He has requested that the town look at trying to balance the tax rate in Carver as it is in Plymouth, you know, knowing that our tax rate is higher than Plymouth's, but Plymouth also has water and sewer and more services than we have. And he is asking for some options as to, you know, he would like to build it on the Carver side, but he is looking for at least to have fair and equitable taxing, you know, between the two towns on that one site. And so Stephen Cole is working on that right now to look at working with the state MOBD, Mass Office of Business Development, to see what options there are for the board to consider, you know, trying to provide some type of an overlay district or a special tax assessment district or something, so that, you know, again, that's one development, the airport, and whether you're on this side of the line or that side of the line, trying to be fair and equitable in the taxes that are there. And right now, we're not getting anything from it, so anything's better than nothing. So we got that. In addition, I've also... It looks like with two of Borrego's properties that they're doing, they're going to be donating twelve thousand eight hundred dollars and sixteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total of a little over twenty-nine thousand dollars. Geez, I think I'm going to... I got a typo here. They actually made it two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars? It's supposed to be twenty-nine thousand dollars? I think I have to tell them they made a typo. I like the two-hundred-and-ninety in here, but when I add twelve and sixteen, it comes to twenty-nine. But, ooh, that was nice. In any case, this is going to be going to our tree fund that will provide a mitigation account that we can then come in and allocate that money to, you know, as we said, all the white pines are coming down here in front of town hall and also next to the library, so that that'll be a pot of money that we'll be able to tap into for doing some improvements for streetscape.
And why is this money being donated?
Because, as I... Well, one is that they know we had a need for it. The second is that when they're doing some of these projects, they're actually clearing down some forest. So one of the planning board members who is in the forestry business was concerned about that. And some of these forests are dead down on Federal Road that they're cutting down, so it was agreed that they would come back and they would make some donations to this. What they've actually done is went out and hired a mass-licensed forester, which I didn't know they're actually a mass-licensed forester, but this guy has license number three nine nine. And what they did is they did a survey of the property and identified what the estimated value of the timber was, and that's the number that Borrego is going to be donating to the town. We anticipate that there are several other solar projects or battery projects that will be doing the same, which, again, is a nice way of providing, in essence, a mitigation fund to restore trees and do it where the town thinks is more appropriate to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Let's see, and one other thing, we have our joint meeting with the school committee meeting next week. One of the items that I'm working on with the superintendent and John Woods, Dave Sigintoff, and our recreation committee is, with all of the new fields that we're putting in town, the school has had, you know, some fees for use of the field, plus the new turf is coming online. One of the things that the town overall has been suffering from is that we haven't had enough staff to actually maintain all of this stuff, nor enough funding to provide all the fertilizer and the seeding that's necessary and the air rating, which in the past, the school committee has cut out of their budgets, and to some extent, some of our fields have been impacted by that. What we're looking to do is not only add an additional staff person, which I've already mentioned is in our budget for the operation and maintenance department, but also trying to have a townwide fee on using certain fields for organized sports. Obviously, out-of-town AAU programs would pay a different rate, but for the in-town stuff, being able to collect enough money that John Woods and Dave Sigintoff can oversee a fertilizer program that, you know, we could do townwide and buy the stuff to come in and actually do it versus the piecemeal stuff, so that we can maintain our fields better. And this is all in an effort to just provide more recreation opportunities to residents of the community. So we're trying to do that as a more organized and townwide issue versus the piecemeal that has been done in the past. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that is all I have.
We will move to selectman updates. Mr. Robertson?
I was extremely disappointed to read about the Y-PAC closing. That is an absolute need in the town. It, I don't know, kind of took me by surprise. I guess I had heard a rumor about it or something of the nature, but that is such a great concept, a great idea to help kids after school with some kind of a program. But I was a little bit distressed, I guess. I don't know what the word I'm reaching for is, that it was... Somebody had said, I don't know who it was, that said that the turkeys got more priority than the Y-PAC. I didn't know the Y-PAC was hurting, that it may be a marketing goof-up, I don't know, but, you know, I knew the turkeys were hurting, but I didn't know Y-PAC was in trouble. And I don't know if that's a marketing or what it is, how that came about, but I don't think the town people, if they knew that the Y-PAC was in financial difficulty, that I'm sure people would step up or try to help. I just don't know the long-term strategy of donations, if that's a good marketing strategy or a business model to follow. But anyways, I was totally disappointed that the program went away, or was planned to go away.
Can I just... Just a comment on that. When that announcement was made, and I did get a call ahead of time that it was happening, I think the following day or two days later, Scott Neef and I met with Mary Ross, who's also a member of the Y-PAC board and is also the chairperson of the recreation committee. And, you know, we kind of strategized and recognized there is a need for some of the programs that are offered. And I think what we're going to look to do, and we don't have a solution yet, but we're working on it, is to figure out how we can have the recreation program take a little bit more of an active role in this. Now, again, our recreation program is fledgling. We just started putting some money into them two years ago, and, you know, you go to some of these other communities, and they've got a staff of three or five or seven running recreation throughout the community. We don't have that yet, but, you know, we're trying to look at, you know, how do we satisfy the demand, particularly at the middle high school, which is where the superintendent, you know, believes there is a need, particularly for some after-school programs, and how those can be combined with some other opportunities. Don't have a solution, but we're working on something.
Yeah, that's good. That's all I have.
Mr. Dunham?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. Well, I also was saddened to hear about the Y-PAC, and I won't say everything that's already been said, but I do hope there's a way that the town can find a way to try to fill that void. I do think that's something that's really needed in the town. Also, I want to remind everybody that Carver, the Crusader Athletic Boosters are hosting their sixth annual family bingo night at the middle high school on February seventh. Doors open at five-thirty, and this is a great way to support our local sports teams. And also, just so everyone remembers, I'll be holding my monthly office hours right in the room next door on February twenty-sixth from five to six. So if you have anything you'd like to talk about, come by and we'll talk.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One was, we had asked to get on the agenda, and let's maybe shoot for the next agenda. There'd been some miscommunications about what was going on with the Atwood House deed and some of the suggestions there. So I thought, let's just get that in the agenda and just sort of lay out what transpired there, because there was some concern that it was going to become condos or something. So I think, let's just, you know, follow through on exactly what is going on, what happened down there, and get clarity on that.
Mr. Chairman, you triggered a thought.
Yes.
I would like to see, hopefully, on our next meeting, on the agenda, discussion... She's laughing at me. Discussion on how we're bundling or not bundling things. I think we need, it's time, we've not been doing this for several years, and I don't know about anybody else, but I've gotten a lot of feedback that some people feel we may be bundling too much, so I think that's worthy of a discussion of the board.
Yeah, why don't we make it just a general format discussion for town meeting articles? Because I know the other issue that comes up is ending each one, saying, and any other action relative thereto, sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not. So let's just sort of have a discussion about some of that and, you know...
Yeah, that's fine.
Because it does seem, I think, sometimes the bundling works. Other times, we spend more time debating the bundling than it actually would have taken to vote each one individually. So let's kick it around and see what seems to make sense. The idea is to try to run an efficient town meeting that's also fair, so...
Right. I don't have any firm ideas, but I think it's something we need to talk about.
What do you think, Mr. Chairman, on that, too, is the board needs to decide, too, if you want to have a one- or two-day town meeting? You know, because everything has consequences, you know, by changing stuff up, and...
We've always got it through in one ninety... As many as seventy-eight articles, but we get it done. You'd be surprised.
Some pretty late hours sometimes.
Sometimes some late hours. Okay, and a couple of other things we had was, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention the Robert H. Merritt Public Service Award. And the background to that is that the Robert H. Merritt Public Service Award was created and presented to Robert "Bob" H. Merritt in July of nineteen ninety-six by the Board of Selectmen in recognition and appreciation for outstanding public service to the town of Carver and making it a better community in which to live. Bob's been a member of the Board of Selectmen, Carver Housing Authority, Local Housing Partnership, Habitat for Humanity, Friends of the Council on Aging, Public Health Nurses Advisory Board, the MCI Plymouth Community Relations Committee, and Wareham Lighthouse Hospice Board, as well as Minister of United Parish, Chaplain of the Carver Fire Department, and Chaplain of Jordan Hospital. The town of Carver would like to continue to recognize the efforts of community members and is opening the award to the public for nomination. The criteria for nominating someone is as follows. You cannot nominate yourself. Individuals being nominated will have consistently demonstrated qualities of compassion and service to either one organization or a variety of volunteer activities over time. Must be in a volunteer capacity. The events or services cannot be part of the nominee's job responsibilities, job description, or duties, and the individual cannot receive any monetary or personal benefits from their involvement. The nominations will be rated using the following criteria. The degree to which their services and actions have made a lasting or meaningful contribution or impact in the community, forty percent. Length and degree of their service, twenty percent. Extent to which their service or action might be considered above and beyond regular participation, twenty percent. And the extent to which their action would impact or be valued by their peers' community, twenty percent. Nominations will be open from March first to March thirty-first only. No early or late nominations will be accepted. Nominations will be reviewed by the Service Award Committee, and the recipient will be announced in May and be recognized at a Board of Selectmen meeting. Nominations must include name and contact information of persons submitting the nomination, name and contact information of the person being nominated, and a detailed description of how this nominee meets the criteria. Submissions can be sent to Human Resources, Carver Town Hall, 108 Main Street, or via email to alain dot weston at carvermass dot org using Merritt Service Award in the subject line. And I'd suggest, if we could, if we could get this criteria posted on the website so people can get it and print it out. And anyone that knows Bob knows that this is named after one of the best people we have in town, and it would certainly be an honor to be able to recognize other folks that have given to the town of Carver. And then also, the...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir?
Who's going to make up the committee to review all these applications?
Ms. Weston, it goes to the Human Resource Department. You're our Human Resource Coordinator. Can you answer that question?
Yes, the committee already exists.
Oh.
It consists of myself, selectman Dave Robertson, and then we asked Superintendent Neef to recommend someone from the school, and he asked if he could serve on the committee. Neef to recommend someone from the school, and he asked if he could serve on the committee.
Excellent.
So it's the three of us.
Thank you very much.
And then just an update, it's town administrator evaluation time again. From February 1st to the 28th, we will distribute and complete evaluation worksheets. From March 1st to the 20th, we'll, each of us should meet with the town administrator to discuss individual evaluations and goals and objectives. March 22nd, turn incomplete evaluations to the Assistant Town Administrator, Ms. Weston, for tabulation. On April 2nd, there will be an executive board meeting to review the evaluation results and solicit town administrator feedback. And on April 23rd, there will be a public discussion of the town administrator evaluation as well as goals and objectives, and the chairman will provide a written summary of the evaluation findings and goals and objectives. This is the same timeline we've used over the last several years, so we're just keeping pace with what we've been doing. And that moves us to.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dunham?
That date on that for the meeting is April what, 23rd?
23rd.
We do not have a meeting scheduled for April 23rd.
That will be a special meeting. We do now.
All right, I just wanted to let you know.
Yep, nope, understood. Okay, so minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Minutes of December 4th. What's the pleasure of the board? I believe that Ms. Hewens, who couldn't be with us tonight because of a death in the family, she had to be out of town, but I believe she made some adjustments and you've all had a chance to review those. What's the pleasure of the board on the 12, four minutes?
I move we accept them.
As amended? There's a second, further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. And the minutes of January 15th, 2019. Pleasure of the board?
I say we accept those.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We have a request for a MS Bike Ride Road Race on June 29th and June 30th in town. The pleasure of the board?
I move we approve the MS Bike Ride Road Race.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. And we need approval for the Ragnar Relay Road Race on May 11th and May 12th, which will be going through Carver on May 11th. Pleasure of the board? Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We have the Best Buddies Challenge Bike Ride Saturday, June 1st, 2019. I believe that's the one Tom Brady's affiliated with.
Yes, it is.
It is.
I move we approve the Best Buddies Challenge Bike Ride Saturday, June 1st.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Our next meetings will be on February 19th, the 5th and 19th of March, the 2nd and 16th of April, with town meeting thrown in there in the middle. The 7th and 21st of May, the 4th and 18th of June, the 2nd and 30th of July, just the 6th of August, the 3rd and 17th of September, the 1st and 15th of October, the 15th and 19th, the 5th and 19th of November, the 3rd and 17th of December, and any other meetings necessary there too, which will include the one on April 20, what did I say?
3rd.
3rd, thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to go into executive session, exemptions two and three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, negotiations with unions, police, and the SEIU clerical that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session, and to reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second. This is, requires a personal vote. Mr. Robertson?
Dave Robertson, aye.
Ron Clark says aye.
Mark Townsend, aye.
Alan Dunham says aye.
That has it. We thank you all for joining us tonight. Congratulations to the New England Patriots for getting their sixth Super Bowl. I have to get a new shelf because I've got, my shelf can only take 11 championship mugs, which we've had in the last 17 years, so I have to buy a longer shelf to put the mugs up on. So everyone enjoy the week and we'll be back in touch soon. Thank you for joining us.